All right. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Uh, September 28th already, nine o'clock. Welcome. First order is adoption of our minutes from September 14th. Everyone had an opportunity to check them, any errors or missions? See none and entertain a motion to adopt them by Martin, second by Deputy Warden Mennel. Thank you. Yes, I call the vote. All in favor. Carrie, thank you. Remind everyone of disclosure of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof. I will note, I see none. Thank you. Presenting petitions, presentations, and delegations. I see we have none. Am I correct? Okay, move on. Entertain a motion to move into committee the whole and... All right, move by Grant, second by... Please, thank you. And I will add, we have an extra report. Need, it's an add-on, so I'll need to get two-thirds majority. Who wants to speak to what it is? Julie, please.
We have received a request from the Township of Malahide to extend CEMC services. So we'd like to contemplate that briefly this morning.
It's a very short report, so we need two-thirds majority, so...
I believe it.
I thought you would. Second by McPhail. All in favor, please. Looks like it's unanimous, so it's on. Thank you for that. Reports of council, outside boards and staff. First up, CAO's strategic plan, staff action, plan update.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through members of council, pleased to report our staff update with respect to council's strategic plan and our deliverables update. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I believe the report is fairly self-explanatory.
Questions for Julie in the report? Comments? Doesn't look like any. Everyone's happy, so I'll move in second here, please. Purcell? Excuse me, second by French. Again, I'll call the vote. All in favor. Carrie, thank you. CAO, you're still up. Economic Development.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. The service delivery review completed November of 2020 contemplated shared service agreement with Economic Development Corporation. And this recommendation didn't come as a surprise to council. In fact, council had identified a general lack of alignment with Economic Development Service and your strategic plan and priorities for our community. Of the 110 or so recommendations included in the service delivery review, council prioritized a number of items for consideration in 2021. One of which was the potential for a shared service with St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation. And the time was right to explore this opportunity as we had a vacancy in the leadership position within this department. After seeing the devastating effects of COVID-19 on our local business community, our team has been working exceptionally hard to respond to the evolving challenges associated with the pandemic. We've been doing so with partners in government, with partners in business, and partners in nonprofit. After conversations with our business community, with Sean Dyke, the CEO of the Economic Development Corporation for the city, and with our staff, we're really pleased to present council with an economic development and tourism business case. And what's included in this business case is a reimagined service for our community. You'll see that staff recommend a shift in focus. And this focus is on rebuilding the local economy and providing our community with the best service possible through regional partnerships and county-delivered economic development services. This reimagined service will include boots on the ground, and our staff will increase their presence in the community to serve Elgin County businesses the best way possible. We recognize the tremendous value that can be achieved through partnership and collaboration, particularly when it comes to established and high-functioning services like what is offered through the St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation. And while we are not recommending that we enter into a formalized shared service agreement or purchase-for-service agreement at this time, we do look forward to increasing our partnerships with the City of St. Thomas, Economic Development Corporation, and many other municipal partners in our region. And while we continue to explore those opportunities, we look forward to continuing to build on our already close working relationship that we have with the Small Business Enterprise Center and with the St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation. And we hope to ensure that our service delivery to our business community is both seamless and efficient on an ongoing basis. So following Brian's presentation, we will seek your support for four recommendations. The first is that Elgin County Council endorse the Economic Development and Tourism Business Plan as presented. That Elgin County Council review and amend the Economic Development and Tourism Business Case as part of your strategic planning discussions early in 2022 to ensure that there is alignment with the priorities that you have for our business community and our community in general. Furthermore, we recommend that Elgin County Council consider the investment in this service as part of your 2022 budget deliberations for which we are preparing all of the background documents now. And lastly, that staff be directed by council to work with St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation, the City of St. Thomas, and regional municipal partners to identify opportunities for enhanced partnership and collaboration on an ongoing basis because we know that is what will make our service successful in the long run. So with that, I'll turn things over to Brian Lima, our General Manager of Engineering, Planning, Enterprise, and Deputy CAO, to walk council and the community through our reimagined business case.
Thank you, Julie. Through Mr. Warden to council. Supporting Elgin's business community has never been more imperative than it is today. The ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and the uncertainty that it continues to present in light of the fourth wave has challenged many local businesses within Elgin County. As a result, Elgin's Economic Development Tourism Department's role is to facilitate and implement regional economic development and tourism strategies and initiatives for the promotion of Elgin as a place to live, work, and play. Initiatives and activities that include business expansion and attraction, workforce attraction, tourism development, and foreign direct investment will not only aim to retain existing businesses, but promote and facilitate the creation of a business environment that will enable local businesses to expand and prosper. All of this is accomplished by engaging and working directly with our local and neighboring municipal partners, business owners, business and community organizations, provincial and federal partners and investors. Tourism initiatives will continue to promote Elgin County as a destination promoting and strengthening the local economy, communities, and events. Strategic marketing of our region's tourism amenities to visitors and residents helps to create jobs and stimulate supply chain spending and enable our businesses' owners to prosper. Aligned with council's strategic plan of growing Elgin to be the best place where people want to live, work, and play, coupled with a vision to support and foster an environment of prosperity and opportunity for the County of Elgin, its residents, and businesses, the department will work collaboratively with all of our partners to advise regional economic interests. In doing so, the department will be guided by four high-level goals that will support the overall vision and encourage prosperity and opportunity for the county and its residents. These goals, their objectives, include: The first, business retention expansion, the objective being to enhance opportunities for the expansion of local businesses and the retention of business investment and entrepreneurs in the county through various endeavors such as the sector-specific business retention expansion, business promotion, maintaining a continuous updated business directory, and so forth. The second goal is workforce attraction that aims to strengthen the availability and quality of the labor force in Elgin to address the needs of business through strategic partnerships with the Workforce Planning Board, Western Ontario Wardens Caucus Workforce Strategy. Once again, a made-in-Elgan campaign that also focuses on this challenge and to facilitate Elgin alumni attraction. The third goal is tourism development, essentially being effective promotion of county assets, talents, and opportunities that will enhance the profile of the county to a targeted audience of visitors and business interests. And finally, the fourth goal, being foreign direct investment which aims to enhance opportunities for the attraction of new business investment and entrepreneurs to the county in support of our key customers as showcased on the next slide. And the department's various core services listed on the next slide. A strong and appropriately-sized team complement will ensure the effective delivery of economic development and tourism programs for the county while providing exceptional service by participating as a key partner in regional initiatives, fostering grassroots business and stakeholder engagement utilizing an enterprise facilitator model, and ensuring responsive action to inquiries and challenges facing businesses in the development community. In the first year of the proposed 2022 work plan, key deliverables include the preparation of departmental plan that will ensure alignment with council's strategic plan, the introduction of programs that focus on foreign direct investment, land inventory, and business supports, and bringing together industry and business leaders in an advisory capacity. 2021 and its accomplishments, ongoing accomplishments, include the preparation of county-wide business directory which included comprehensive inventory of all businesses operating in Elgin to confirm business contacts and making the information available in a GS technology format and available to the public. Second ongoing accomplishment, being vacant land inventory. Staff recently identified the need to develop and offer a central repository where all existing zoned and designated vacant lands can be made available. Accordingly, with the support of the county's in-house GS technician, staff aims to make this information available in a public format. Next, council recently endorsed a new streamlined film promotion approvals process that included the development of a new website, online application process, which was developed collaboratively in consultation with LMPs and city staff. While Elgin incentives is an award-winning program that started in 2015, a recent comprehensive detailed review of the program undertaken in consultation with our LMPs identified improvements to the application process, identified administrative efficiencies, and recommended updated features to the program that will reduce the burden to the various committee members and municipal CEOs. Finally, tourism currently works on a number of promotional and product development campaigns each calendar year and looks forward to reattending various community events and trade shows as we continue our effort to promote Elgin County as a great place to visit, live, work, play, and start a business. As part of the upcoming 2022 budget deliberation process, continued pre-pandemic investment will be considered by the Budget Committee with recommendations therefore presented to council. A renewed focus, Elgin County's Economic Development Tourism Department will continue working towards enhanced support of our LMPs through participation in active local economic development committees, business retention, expansion efforts, workforce attraction initiatives, tourism development programming, and addressing investment inquiries. A greater communication focus is plan that aims to foster proactive open lines of communication with our various key customers, businesses, stakeholders, and council. Communicating the challenges, opportunities, and business community's success is a primary pillar of this effort. In closing, the department strives to work collaboratively with our community, municipal, and neighboring partners to increase business community engagement utilizing an enterprise facilitator model, all of which aligns with council's strategic plan of growing Elgin to be the best place where people want to live, work, and play, and strives to support and foster an environment of prosperity and opportunity for the County of Elgin, its residents, and businesses. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Good job. Questions for Brian? Comments, please? Grant, go ahead.
Not so much as a question or comment, it's a look forward to what's exciting, what's going to happen the next year or two. It's timed, well timed, and needed badly.
I agree more. Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just looking through the process there, you talked about doing a comprehensive land inventory across the county as to what lands may or may not be developed. And I think that there's two different categories there, that yes, we do have an inventory of potential development lands, but I think we really have to have a good understanding of which of those lands are available and which are sitting there just as an investment. And I think that at some point in time, we need to have that increased discussion as to... That's fine if you want your investment there, but I think that for the benefit of everyone here that there should also be some type of increased levy on those properties if they're just sitting in inventory for someone to balance their portfolio.
Point. Further comments? All right. Move in second, or go, Grant?
I would move.
Okay, move by Grant, second by Bob. On no further discussion, all in favor, please? Carrie, thank you. Next up, Director of Community and Cultural Service of Path Forward. Did I miss one? Oh, go ahead. No?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. We did receive a request from the Township of Malahide to extend some interim CEMC or Community Emergency Management Coordinator services that we were offering kind of on an interim basis. So they have asked that we consider extending the arrangement until December of 2022. There is one catch. We have an established pilot program in place with three of our other municipal partners, namely Municipality of Dutton Dunwich, Municipality of West Elgin, and Township of South Hole. So my recommendation today is that council consider supporting an extension of the CEMC services to the Township of Malahide until the end of the pilot for the other three municipal partners, which is October 30th. Sorry. It's October 30th, 2021. And at your next council meeting, we will bring a report forward that contains the success of the pilot, provides you with some metrics, gives you a chance to evaluate how how that pilot has gone, and will recommend what's... Will provide some recommended next steps for your consideration. So we'll be able to notify Malahide that they're okay till the end of October and then be able to provide all of our municipal partners with more information following your next council meeting. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
See, heads nodding. Everyone happy with that, or questions, comments?
I'll move the recommendation.
Move by Mennel and Jagair. No further questions, all in favor. Carrie, thank you. And we'll move on to the unruly library patrons. All right, Brian, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to council. Yeah, this report recommends revisions to our total content policy. The extended revisions are outlined in the report and certainly willing to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments for Brian? Fairly straightforward. Move in second, or please? Martin and French? All in favor, please? Thank you. That carries. Path forward on library fines, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you to council, we're just going to spend a few minutes today outlining this issue. It's one that is certainly merging within library services in our region and across North America. I'm pleased today to be joined by Mamie Marlowe, who's going to jump into this presentation in a few minutes. And we also have Delene Van Zill and Susan Morell, our library supervisors. So we formed a task force on this, consulted with staff, and obviously even came back from our patrons in the library sector in general. And so they're here today to also support this presentation. If you have any questions. You can go to the first slide. So here's an overview of what we're going to present to you today. Pros and cons, going fine-free, and ultimately recommend a process we could take towards going to fine-free if you wish us to pursue this. So today, we just want to get your sense of direction if you want us to go down this road. So many libraries in North America and in our region have recently gone fine-free, including Chadwick Kent, Oxford, St. Thomas, and London. I was able to confirm last week that Little Sex has gone fine-free on juvenile materials. So, you know, there is a larger movement on this. Nevertheless, I mean, we don't do things just because everyone else is doing them. And this decision will be yours to make as we go forward in consultation with our ratepayers. But we just wanted to let you know that sort of broader context of what is going on. And on that regard, here's some coverage in the London Free Press. There's lots of coverage in media these days about libraries that have gone fine-free, particularly during COVID. Almost every library is, well, we find this during COVID just because of the inability to pay. But this slide just outlines some of the reasons why we're lying, went in that direction. At this point, I'm going to hand it over to Natalie.
Good morning, and thank you very much, Brian. I just wanted to add that the pandemic has also played a role in encouraging this fine-free movement. When public libraries were physically closed as a pandemic response, many waived fines, including Elgin, who waived fines after March 17th, 2020, and recently instituted a fine structure in early August of 2021. As public libraries reopen their buildings in response to their community members, many decided to extend this waiving of fines. Elgin County Library has waived fines or was fine-free for library users for 18 months during the pandemic. So what does fine-free actually mean for a public library system? These two terms, fines and fees, as outlined here, represent different types of charges, but not all of the charges that library members can automatically accrue on their accounts. The elimination, a partial elimination of one or both of these types of charges means the library system is considered fine-free. So we've identified eight arguments in support of a fine-free library system. A few highlighted concepts include how very little revenue is generated by overdue fines collection, this is less than 1% for Elgin County Library, and encouraging donations can increase this revenue. How overdue fines are often seen as a financial barrier to families, and the embarrassment of returning an item late and having to pay can often cause a family to stop using the library altogether. How eliminating these barriers would provide a greater return on our investment, increasing not only the usage of materials that libraries already paid for, but also increasing the return rate of library materials, and thus reducing the amount we would spend on replacing these items. And how the usage of electronic resources is growing significantly, and these particular resources do not fit within our traditional library fine and pay model. So this particular slide is infographic. It demonstrates organizational costs of collecting fines. Using the iceberg analogy with a $5 fine. This infographic shows that while fines are indeed a revenue source, the cost of collecting those fines could easily outweigh the revenue. As you can see, the hidden costs below the surface, these include the time a staff member spends with a customer discussing this fine, the mental health impact that a challenging fines negotiation can have on a staff member, the stationary cost and staff time cost of preparing overdue notices in print as well as sending via email, and the costs involved in collecting online fines payments via PayPal. So we've identified six arguments against a fine-free library system, and a few highlighted concepts include how library materials are public goods and fines encourage respect for public property. How it's traditionally believed that a fine structure in library membership provides a good learning experience for young people, including developing lifestyles. And how fines remain a source of revenue at a time when libraries have to think creatively about finding revenue sources. How it's traditionally believed that fines not only incentivize timely returns of library materials to reduce wait times for others, but also these timely returns may lead to a lower fine revenue generated. And finally, how longer loan periods and higher fine thresholds mitigate the need to go fine-free. So this is a screenshot from the Elgin County Library website, and it reflects our current fines and fee structure for physical collections. It does not encompass or apply to our electronic resources collection, which includes our eBooks, our e-audios, our e-music, our e-movies, or our databases. These digital products all have different lending models that don't involve a fine structure, and all have different providers as well. The online collection is growing in size and usage in response to community demand in the pandemic. So this slide gives a current fine snapshot of our library system. Highlight two points there. So as you can see, the annual revenue for overdue fines paid was approximately $12,000 per year over the past four years. However, has decreased significantly in 2020 to an amount of $3,488.11. This decrease was due to the increased usage of our e-resources collection as well as the pandemic. In 2021 to date, $2,173.90 has been paid in overdue fines, which shows a developing trend in this annual revenue decreasing. Also, we currently have 8,729 inactive cardholders, and many due to fines barriers as well as COVID-19. In our annual library performance measures report for 2020, we had identified that a goal for this year was to grow our number of active cardholders by at least 1% or 100 new cardholders. Going fine-free would support that objective. So this pie chart shows that among our total patrons, more than half, approximately 65.4%, don't owe any fines. 25.5% of our patrons owe under $10 in fines, which means that these customers are within the fine threshold, which is $10, and would not experience a barrier to accessing library materials or services. However, approximately 9.1% of our patrons owe over $10 in fines, which means that these customers have exceeded the fines threshold and would be barred to accessing library materials and services. If the fine threshold were moved entirely, these patrons would regain access. So at this time, I'd now like to welcome Susan Morell, who is our branch supervisor for our couple of staff of the library. And she's going to speak to the next slide, which is the impact that fines have had on to Elgin County library families.
Thank you. Thank you, Natalie. Hopefully, everyone can hear me all right. If not, please let me know. In this slide, we've provided a couple of examples of families in our libraries who have been impacted by fines. Now, these are not isolated instances. I know that other branch supervisors have experienced issues in terms of barriers that fines impose on our users. I'd like to emphasize that many of these families are diligent, responsible, and love using the library, but sometimes circumstances beyond their control make it difficult for them to return items on time. Often, every effort is made to stay in good standing with the library as they recognize the importance of literacy and learning for their families. And now I'll turn it back to Brian. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we're proposing a phased-in approach to this matter. Judy wishes to explore this. Next year, we propose to remove fines on children's materials and reduce fines on DVDs, which are a major source of fines, and eventually we know that that is going to decline. I mean, DVDs will eventually decline use, and it is a major source right now. So we're proposing to drop that because it's a major barrier right now, because fines accrue quite rapidly on those. We estimate the impact to be about $5,000 annually, which we are confident we can mitigate through duration. We've been making arrangements at a curfew level. And in 2023, we would extend this further to include other materials like adult fiction, which can have an annual impact of about $8,000. Again, we'll continually monitor this and mitigate as we go along. And we will report back to you after each phase as we go forward. But today, we are seeking your endorsement to move forward with the consultation process. I mean, we want to be community-led. We want to hear from our patrons. We want to hear from our ratepayers. And so we just want today to go forward with that consultation process. We've outlined what that consultation process could look like and so that we can see, you know, what our ratepayers are telling us about this matter. And we also need to start claiming for the budget act of a slight reduction of revenue. Again, we're practically experiencing this already anyway, so we've had to mitigate this in the last two years. And so recommendations are outlined... And so recommendations are outlined in the presentation, and the next steps, we're hoping to go forward with this consultation process and report back to you of all the results of that. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, comments? Counselor Martin.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I've always been surprised by the 10 cents, just because when I was in university 55 years ago, it was 50 cents at the university, if you relate with a book. And I never thought 10 cents was much of an incentive to return a book. So I can see that, and still 10 cents. It was 55 years ago. The one thing I was surprised by the four weeks for a book, so I'm assuming eBooks are different because I've been borrowing eBooks throughout the whole pandemic, and they're three weeks, not four.
Yeah, two or three, yeah. The three, Mr. Warden, the loan models on eBooks, we could spend all day talking about that. It's the market is still very volatile in what each one does, each publisher does. But definitely, and you raise a really key point. The traditional fine structure does not work with electronic materials, and it's continuing to be a growing part of our collection. And so eventually, this revenue is going to decline. Not to say that we won't have a physical collection, we stand by that for, you know, growing out, but reality is that e-resources are going to grow in usage, and the fine structure on those doesn't work because of one example, sometimes they're loaned for a three-week period, and then they auto expire. You simply don't have it anymore. It just deletes itself.
Or you can put a hold, get it back again later. No, and I see that the fines, to me, haven't done much. I do understand, you know, that you don't want to lose materials, library materials. That's important. And I, so I, I would understand, and I would agree with trying this and see how it works. I certainly don't want to lose people's right to use the library. I think that's important, but I would encourage them to bring their materials back. Some way, we need to encourage them to get the materials back. Sometimes, I know some children, they get damaged. Sometimes, some materials get damaged, and they're embarrassed to bring them back. And that, that has happened, I know, with some families that I was teaching.
I think we had a comment over here. Go ahead, Dave.
Just a question, Brian. I'm not surprised that it's a net loss to sending out the fines. It's, there's more staff time than what the fines actually bring in. My question is, returning books and materials without a fine, what is our neighbors experienced? Has that increased when there's no longer a fine structure? I mean, it's just, it's just a small incentive to bring it back, but is that really part and parcel of not getting it back?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Warden, to respond to the question, I mean, that's an excellent question. There is still lots of data coming in on that. We're not seeing systems reporting a market change in the return of materials as a result of going fine free. The key part, Dave, even to respond to Counselor Martin's comment, is that if it's not returned within a certain period, it's considered lost, and then there is a replacement fee that's levied. And at that point, they also become blocked. So it's not like we're just saying, no, you don't want, you never have to bring it back. There is a point where we actually require it to be returned, or else it will be considered lost, and a replacement charge will be levied through the paper. So I just want to make that clear as well, that that ultimately, at the end of the day, does incentivize a return of the item.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in favor of a trial period.
Counselor French.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to commend staff a well-thought-out report. It's methodical. I like your approach, and I like the fact that the public will have an opportunity to speak about this, and we're not being irrational. We're actually thinking through this, so excellent.
Counselor Jagair.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm wondering, as part of your phased-in approach, if you have, or if you would consider replacing the stick with a carrot? And I know as part of the fine-free movement, I think there have been other pilot projects, maybe more in the U.S. or in the U.K. that I've come across where, there are two things that I've come across where you can reward people who are always on time, and there's a kind of a bonus, you can have a prize, and it's no cost necessarily to the municipality because you can partner with an agency who sponsors the prize. And so you get rewarded continuously for never having any late materials. And I think I've come across other, in lieu of fines, you were, especially for children, you were rewarded with additional recommended readings, like additional materials, or enrolled in a program at the library. So it was kind of the reverse, where you were encouraged to participate more and read more. So just to make sure that, yeah, we don't turn people away from reading, which I, I think you've captured that very well, but I'm wondering if you'd be willing to explore that as well.
Three, Mr. Warden, certainly. And again, another great point, I mean, there's a lot of negative connotations about fines, but the fact is that most of our users are extremely responsible. And we do find ways, we have lots of carrots we give out over the year, but certainly, in this case, a campaign that will actually make this as a, as a positive, you know, campaign that rewards people for actually following and returning items in the sense of civic responsibility that goes along with that, I think is a really key part. It will certainly be stressing that as we go forward.
Counselor Ketchball.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a quick question regarding the, if, if you adopt the fine-free process moving forward, is there any contemplation of forgiving past overdue fines? Or is that still going to remain?
It, it's, again, three, Mr. Warden, another great question. We'll have to contemplate that. We know, so for instance, when we did a migration from our current catalog system to the previous catalog to the current, we had a whole bunch of people that were, we had to basically take out of the system because they were inactive for a whole bunch of reasons. And at the time, I recall, we had coverage about, you know, how many fines were actually on the books that we couldn't collect. And this is not an uncommon problem of libraries. I mean, trying to collect these fines, it's just not worth the effort to get them, but at the same time, you know, we recognize that there are many who maybe through different circumstances in their life at that time weren't able to pay, but maybe they want to come back, but they've been embarrassed to come back, frankly. And so we, you know, we have to look at, so I think, you know, moving in the direction of trying to clean the slate as much as we possibly can, and then, then moving forward. But at the same time, we do have some instances too where we know that some have materials that they just simply refuse to return, blocked for that reason, and we have to look at that. So really, it's going to have to be almost a case-by-case situation as we go forward in terms of assessing some of these fines and what's, what's, what's out there outstanding. But we're pretty confident as we move forward that if we can, if we can, again, clean, clean the slate a little bit on this, and then explaining to people why, you know, they need to return the materials with that caveat that if you don't return it this time, you will be blocked because there will be a charge levied on it. Hopefully, that'll incentivize returns. The major thing here is we got families really, that are, because they're, one member's blocked, and the kids don't have a card, the whole family is basically having an issue with using the library. We certainly don't want to see that happen.
Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As Sally has taken us into the yesteryears. You know, I can vividly remember as a kid having overdue library books. And to be honest, it's, it's one of those things that kind of stays in the back of your mind even to this day, that you had some choices that you had to make because you knew the book was overdue, and it just kept getting farther overdue. So to fess up to that, number one, you would face the wrath of your parents for being totally irresponsible and not looking after this the way that you should. Really, it was never the money issue because then, like now, I didn't have any money, somebody else had to pay for it, so that was going to be my parents. But the other thing that really, really concerned me was doing the walk of shame through the librarian's desk, messing up that you had this overdue library book. So I have to admit, my solution was, I stuck the book under the bed, and I never ever went back. So I don't know how many kids are out there that are facing that, that they would rather, they would rather just forget the whole thing than have to face up to everybody. So if you take away that, take away that disincentive, maybe it might be a better idea to keep our, our number of users up.
Well, Mr. Warden, if I could bring a moment of levity to this, there is a Seinfeld episode that explains exactly this about that. If you had, look it up, because it's about the efforts he went to recover a book.
I think he probably owes about $14,000. I think you should collect on that one, right?
But yeah, you know, those emails are still going to go out that your book is overdue. So as you described as the walk of shame, like, we're still going to remind people that they have to return their items and that they're due. So, you know, again, this is really about encouraging responsible usage and buy-in that, you know, we all benefit if you actually do follow these rules, without necessarily, you know, those who are most vulnerable hitting them with fines.
I'm just thinking of library books and parking fines, but we won't go there. Thank you for the report, Brian. We've had a pretty good discussion and maybe some smiles, but a good report, other discussion.
I would move the recommendations as Brian presented.
And second by McPhail. Thank you for that, staff. We have a motion seconded. Ready for the question? All in favor, please. And that carries. Thank you. I guess I'm one of those ones that have driven by more libraries and gone into libraries, but I certainly appreciate, and I love to read, so. Next up is manager of planning, official plan review discussion paper, number three, Elgin Natural Heritage System Study, Source Water Protection and Environmental Policy Amendments. Welcome, Nancy.
Good morning, Warden. Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. As part of the official plan review process, several key topics were identified that were a larger review. This discussion paper, number three, entitled Elgin Natural Heritage System Study, Source Water Protection and Environmental Policy Amendments, highlights the Elgin Natural Heritage System Study, which was drafted in 2019. The discussion paper also highlights the implementation and draft policies related to the source water protection plans, which were completed in 2017. It is recommended that this discussion paper and the draft Elgin Natural Heritage System Study, Source Water Protection Plan and Policies be circulated to the public and local municipalities and stakeholders to solicit feedback. Staff will also be conducting two community meetings as well as one virtual meeting to be scheduled for late October to allow the public an opportunity to provide in-person and virtual feedback on these reports and studies. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Nancy. Questions, comments, please. Moved by Grant. A second, please. Counselor Martin. No further discussion, we'll call the, call the vote. All in favor, please. Carrie. Thank you, Nancy. Next up, senior counsel. Central Elgin Antenna's License Agreement on the Administration Building. Brian?
Yeah, I actually speak to that. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, counsel. The purpose of this report is to inform counsel and seek your approval and authorization to execute the proposed draft antenna lease agreement. That before you and prepared by the county solicitor between Elgin County and Quatnet Canada Incorporated, a successor of Tourist Communications Limited, and relating to the existing antenna tower owned by the county located at our White Station Operations Center. The agreement provisions are detailed in the report. The recommendation before you is that report be received and filed, that county council approve the draft appended agreement between Quatnet and Elgin County in relation to wireless antenna installation. And that county council further authorized execution of the draft agreement by the warden and chief administrative officer. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, comments? Is it my understanding, Brian, that there is room for someone else up there as well, or is this exclusive?
Following a structural analysis, which would need to be undertaken to confirm that the tower is capable of facilitating and supporting additional equipment, we believe there is capability in that regard, yes.
Further comments? Looking for a mover and second, please. Jones? French? No further discussion? All in favor? Carrie's, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Next up, Director of Homes and Senior Services, Meals on Wheels Agreement, Elgin V O N. Did I miss one? That's by focus. Which one did I miss?
Nicholas is going to speak to county administration.
Welcome, Nick. Sorry about that.
So this is just another agreement about antennas, actually. So these ones are on the county administration building. Central Elgin was renewing its lease. It came to Steve's attention that there are antennas up on the building. It's easier to deal with through a separate agreement. That's the agreement that's before you today. One update was written is that Central Elgin has accepted this, signed copyback, so they reported they'd seen it, but they didn't actually. So if there are any questions, that's the rule.
Yes, that is familiar. Was it last night? We, yeah, we passed that, so pretty straightforward. Questions, comments? Mover and second, please. Ketchball moves. McPhail seconds. All in favor, please. And that carries. Thank you. I'm back on track. Director of Homes and Senior Services, Meals on Wheels Agreement, Elgin V O N. Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through each member of council. The report before you is the Mezzanimo Agreement, and it's pretty self-explanatory. There's two recommendations that the report received and filed, and second, the council authorized the warden and CEO to execute the agreement between Elgin and V O N for the time period of October 1, 2021 to September 3, 2023. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions, comments? Fairly straightforward.
I would just commend you because it is a great program, and I'm very glad that we are able to do this.
Thank you. We're very pleased to get it. Go on, you guys.
Certainly is. Are you willing to move that?
Certainly.
Okay. Do we have a second? Jagair. Ready for the vote? Favor? Carrie's, thank you. Item nine, motion to defer the infection control policy 210, immunization staff COVID-19 report until after close session. Did I read that right? Moved by Jones, second by Ketchball. Ready for the question? All in favor? And that carries. We'll defer that till after. Council Correspondents. Items for consideration. Allison Adams, Manager of Legislative Services Clerk, Township of Malahide with a resolution requesting a review of the Imperial Road and Unwise Intersection. What would you like to do with that? Counselor Martin.
I'm all in favor of doing that because we have a lot of interceptions that are dangerous, and I know that one can be so, there have been some dangerous accidents there. So I don't know entirely what the county can do, but I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to review it and see what could be done.
I believe the intention was simply have to have staff look at it to see if there is some traffic calming remedies that it is a danger, especially when you're coming over the hill. So it's just a request for staff to look at it.
Brian?
If I may, then pose before council that resolution be that staff be directed to review the intersection Imperial Road and John Weiss Line and Township of Malahide to determine what safety enhancements could be implemented, and that this intersection be reviewed during the completion of the ongoing transportation master plan, and that staff report back to council with the results of their review.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, so I'm prepared to move it.
All right. Moved by Mennel, second by Jones. No further discussion? Favor? Carrie's, thank you. Items for information consent agenda. We have a letter from Jeff York regarding drowning prevention in St. Thomas, Elgin, a monthly report from Swift, Diana Wilson, Deputy Clerk, Township of Malahide with resolution regarding, requesting copies of county policies regarding facilitating internet projects. With your pleasure on those three.
I'll make a motion, receiving file.
Second or? Here. Discussion. Ready for the vote? All in favor? Carries. Thank you. Other business. Statements, inquiries by members. Uh, Counselor French, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. I have a statement. Um, I'm just announcing that I'm going to be putting my name forward for Warden in, uh, for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, notice of motion. Anyone have a notice of motion? Matters of urgency? I hope not. Not seen any. We're at closed meeting items. Ready to go into closed session? Yes.
Before we, or after we, uh, go through the necessary motions, uh, if you would entertain a short comfort break, that'd be.
I can understand that and I'd support that. Um, don't take recess first or?
Please. Uh, do you want to go into?
Okay. Someone like to, by Martin, second by Ketchabah. All in favor of going into closed session? Okay. If we are in closed session, we'll take a short break. Call the vote. All in favor to come out. Carries. Thank you. Okay, we are back in open session. Welcome. Um, where am I? Motion to rise and report. We've done that, um.
To go back to the.
Uh, Director of Homes and.
You just have to rise and report. So you need to actually report on what was disclosed or discussed and closed.
All right, we need to, motion to rise and report and discuss.
So the recommendation would be that, um, staff, the, the report from the Director of Homes and Senior Services be received.
All right. Mover and second or please. Uh, Ketchabah, McFail. Call the vote. All in favor? Carries. Thank you. Back, um, Michelle, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Through you, members of council. This morning I have a presentation on the long-term care home COVID nineteen immunization policy. Do you have that presentation? So while Carolyn's pulling up the presentation, there will be two recommendations. The first recommendation is that the report titled Homes Infection Control Policy two point one oh Immunization Staff COVID nineteen September one first be received and filed. And second, the council directs staff regarding the adoption of the homes draft infection control policy two point one oh immunization staff COVID nineteen policy changes. So just a reminder for council that back in June of two thousand twenty-one, I did bring forward to council an immunization policy that was approved by council. The highlights of that policy include that all staff, students, and volunteers must provide proof of COVID nineteen vaccination or provide proof of medical exemption and the effective time period for the medical reason, or provide proof of completion of the mandatory education program. Additionally, all staff, students, and volunteers that are not fully vaccinated will receive rapid antigen testing. Additionally, effective July first of twenty-one, all new hires must provide proof of vac- full vaccination or provide proof of medical exemption and the effective time period. Next slide. Uh, so I wanted to talk a little bit about our current state and share the staff and resident vaccination rates by home. Uh, Bobier Villa is currently at ninety-two point four seven percent. Elgin Manor, eighty-nine percent of staff are fully vaccinated, and Terrace Lodge has seen an increase to seventy-seven point six percent. I, I will note that there have been a few, uh, staff across all three homes that have had their first dose, so we anticipate those numbers to, to increase. Resident vaccination rates by home, Bobier Villa is currently sitting at ninety-one percent, Elgin Manor ninety-seven percent, and Terrace Lodge ninety-four percent. Since, uh, bringing the, uh, uh, first policy to council, there's been some changes and updates from the Ministry of Long-Term Care Directive number three. So effective September second of this year, the following changes to the ministry's directive three. So there's an addition of a section two point six and two point seven, which allow a long-term care home to decide to remove the option of completion of a COVID nineteen vaccination educational program as a reason for being unvaccinated, and then require all staff, students, and volunteers to either provide proof of vaccination or a medical reason. Recognizing the importance of education, homes that do choose that option are still required to make available an education program for those interested in obtaining more information prior to receiving a vaccine. The directive has also been updated to allow for proof of vaccine for all vaccines approved by the World Health Organization, so not just Health Canada. Directive number three now aligns with hospital directive number six regarding the option of education reform. Wanted to share with council some healthcare COVID nineteen statistics. So I pulled from the Canadian Institute for Health Information, an article of June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, which reported nearly ninety-five thousand healthcare workers have contracted COVID nineteen and forty-three have died in Canada. In Ontario, long-term care home COVID nineteen information from the period of January fifteenth, two thousand twenty to September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, long-term care outbreaks, that is now at five twenty-five as of yesterday. Resident outbreaks is now at three thousand eight, or sorry, resident deaths, three thousand eight hundred and sixteen deaths in long-term care homes in the province of Ontario, and staff deaths is thirteen. In recent months, there have been a number of physician statements advocating for mandatory vaccinations for healthcare workers in all sectors. The Registered Nurses Association of Ontario, a seniors care coalition for, of profit organizations, Advantage Ontario, which includes a recent coalition, uh, SEIU, Canadian Medical Association, and of course, Public Health Unit Recommendations. I can note, it's important to note that almost all long-term care homes and many other healthcare or healthcare organizations have mandated vaccination for new hires and retirees. A little bit more information on the coalitions. So I did share at the last council, there was a seniors care coalition. So that's many of Canada's largest operators of long-term care homes, require their staff to be fully vaccinated against COVID nineteen or face an unpaid leave of absence. So that's effective October twelfth. It's coming soon. Uh, there's been additional homes that have joined that coalition and they have a November first effective date. Since that time, Advantage Ontario member, uh, long-term care homes have also formed a coalition. And as September fifteenth, fifteen, not-for-profit and municipal long-term care homes across the province announced that they too will require their staff to be fully vaccinated against COVID nineteen or face an unpaid leave of absence. It is anticipated there will be further announcements of St. Nature from not-for-profit municipal long-term care homes. Some not-for-profit municipal long-term care homes will see to be managing the announcement, and others elected to announce any type of official mission. Some local and regional information. The local information within Elgin and St. Thomas, the long-term care homes, uh, there's a number that already have a mandatory vaccination policy in place that includes Charterland Elmer, Extendicare in Port Stanley, and both aggressive cares in St. Thomas. There is a very large percentage of O L T C O homes across the province that have mandatory vaccination policy. So I reached out to our neighbors regionally and not-for-profit long-term care homes and municipal homes to see what they were doing. Oxford Counties, the three Woodinford Lodges have a mandatory vaccination policy in place. Dearness, uh, home in the city of London, Sun Parlor Home in the County of Essex, and the Niagara Region Homes, Semple County Homes, Hastings County Homes, and others. In discussion with those homes, some homes have, uh, once implemented the mandatory policy have already seen a shift in vaccination. Next slide. So some current COVID nineteen statistics. Ontario long-term care homes currently in outbreak. When I did this presentation, there was ten as of yesterday. There's seventeen long-term care homes in the province of Ontario in outbreak, and two hundred across Canada. That was reported on the weekend. Just an update on that Durham home that I mentioned, um, at last council. There are up to twenty-one resident cases with four resident deaths and eleven staff cases. Um, I'm sure council is probably aware of the southwestern public health vaccination rates, but I did, did reflect them there just to give you an idea of where we're sitting locally as well as within the province. Some of my discussions with homes that have implemented a, a mandatory policy, um, they've seen some significant results. So one home reported eighty-eight percent before they announced the policy, and they were up to ninety-eight point five percent and not yet to the date of effective, uh, effective date in their policy. I asked them, had to have some conversations with staff. Why were they waiting? And, um, some staff or a good number of staff were just waiting until they had to make the decision. Those were some of the comments that the team had heard back. Just a, a reminder, we are all aware, we don't really need that reminder, but the County of Elgin long-term care homes have an obligation under provincial legislation to take all necessary precautions reasonable in the circumstances to protect the health and safety of staff and residents in the long-term care homes. And that does include from the hazards of COVID nineteen. That legislation includes the Occupational Health and Safety Act, the Long-Term Care Home Act, Ontario Regulation seventy-nine ten. If we look at some urban statistics and potential risks, um, certainly the management team and constable human resources has, has done a, a very detailed statistical review looking at, uh, home staff and resident vaccination rates locally, outbreaks, what's happening with transmission in our community, the number of positive rapid antigen and PCR tests. And on the flip side, looking at the risk, uh, review, so staffing considerations, ability to maintain quality resident care, accountability to the health and safety of staff and residents, and the outbreaks. So looking at the policy development and review, the draft mandatory vaccination policy included in your package is in line with directive three and supports the direction that vaccines provide a high-level protection against COVID nineteen and related variants. The management team carefully reviewed and considered vaccination policies adopted by other municipality long-term care homes. The draft policy presented to council today aims to achieve full vaccination against those to whom the policy applies in alignment with provincial directives and subject to limited exceptions in accordance with the Human Rights Code. Vaccination will be done in combination with health and safety and infection prevention and control precautions. Um, has been identified as the most effective means of reducing the transmission of COVID nineteen in the workplace and in our community. We will maintain all current health and safety and IPAC precautions. The County of Elgin Homes reserves the right to amend the policy as the county determines to be appropriate or required. Who does this policy apply to? It applies to anyone entering one of the long-term care homes, uh, County of Elgin long-term care home employees, including full-time, part-time, permanent, temporary, and casual staff. Uh, I said long-term care homes, but it's all County of Elgin, uh, employees. Staff of contractors or consultants that are providing care to and/or interacting with residents, acting on behalf of the corporation, volunteers and interns and students on placement. The education program that's been approved, um, and provided by the County of Elgin will continue to be available to exempt unvaccinated staff and for unvaccinated staff interested in obtaining more information prior to receiving a vaccine. The policy is indefinite in nature to address the risks and impacts of COVID nineteen pandemic, noting the duration of the pandemic remains unknown. The policy will be reviewed on a regular basis and amended as required as new information, data, and public health administration guidelines regarding COVID nineteen pandemic involve. The management team has developed an administrative procedure to support policy and implementation. Active screening will continue for all persons entering the long-term care homes as per ministry directives. Collection of information and privacy consideration aligned with applicable legislation and reporting requirements. So those to whom the policy applies can select one of the following options. First, they can provide vaccination with proof of full vaccination by November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. A reminder that full vaccination includes fourteen days after the second dose. Second choice, not vaccinated but in progress to complete vaccination. The first dose does need to be by October twentieth of this year in order to be able to provide sufficient time for the second dose and the fourteen days required for full vaccination. During that timeframe, rapid antigen testing will be provided by the county. Third, those that, that are not vaccinated due to an improved medical or human rights accommodation that would go to the Human Resources Department for review and approval. And again, mandatory rapid testing would occur and other accommodations as deemed appropriate. And fourth, effective November thirtieth, those that are not fully vaccinated or declined to disclose vaccination status and unpaid leave of absence. So, um, again, the consequences of not compliance with the policy, uh, anyone failing to comply with the policy would be placed on unpaid leave of absence until such time as they meet the policy requirements. So there's two recommendations today before council. First, that report be received and filed. And second, that council direct staff regarding the adoption of the homes draft infection control policy two point one oh immunization, sorry, immunization staff COVID nineteen policy changes. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Questions, comments from Michelle? We have two recommendations. Oh, I'm sorry. Sally, go ahead.
I, I'm in full support and I would move that we adopt the recommendations.
Thank you. Further comments? Deputy Warden?
Well, I, I agree with, uh, Sally. I think we have to have an aggressive approach and, uh, and, uh, this is a health and safety issue, in my opinion, and I'll be willing to second that.
We have a mover and second or further discussion? Are we ready for the vote? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Amy. Next up, motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole. Brian?
Three, Mr. Warden, and to council resolve that, uh, motion before we resolve that, uh, we, uh, adopt the recommendations of committee of the whole.
Mover and second or please. Moved by Jones, second by French. Discussion. All in favor, please. That carries. Thank you.
Mr. Warden, I'll defer to Catherine.
Catherine?
Uh, be it resolved that bylaw number twenty-one thirty-six, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the municipal council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Thank you for that. Do we have a mover and second or? No, and Ketchabah. Any discussion? Call the vote. All in favor? Carries. Thank you. I'm pretty much right at the bottom of the page here. Is there anything else? Not seen anything. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Happily.
Moved by Jones, second by French. And everyone, we have, uh, another engagement later on at the Royal Oak. Looking forward to it. We have to scoot over and, uh, open a roundabout and, uh, get there as quick as I can. So, thank you. We've had a.
Call. Call.
Yes, I just want to thank everyone for your attention. We, we, some good discussions today, serious discussion. So thank you, everyone. But, uh, yes, have to call the vote and then we can go. All in favor? Thank you. It's carried. We are adjourned.